This is a hybrid meeting. We're in building one, room two eighty. For public virtual attendance, you may follow along on the Thurston County TV channel. I'm Carolina McKeon, the Chair of the Board, Vice Chair Ty Munster to my right. Joining us via Zoom is Commissioner Gary Edwards. Also in the boardroom, we have County Manager Ramiro Travis, Assistant County Manager Robin Campbell, and Director of Public Works Jennifer Walker, as well as other staff members joining us today to discuss the state of the Thurston County Park and Trail system.
Thank you. So this is an annual presentation. Our Road Operations Manager, which is where Parks and Trail System lies, Mike Lohman is going to give that presentation. Ed Marson is our Parks Maintenance and Operations Manager. And then Rick Thomas is our manager of our Project and Program Management Office, so handling the capital project side. So lots of kind of wraparound support for maintaining that that system. So with that, I will turn it over to Mike Lohman.
Thank you, Director. Morning Commissioners. I am Mike Lohman, Public Works Road Operations Manager. It's my pleasure to be here today to share the state of the Park and Trail system. As Jennifer mentioned, Ed is with me. He oversees the Park and Trail system. And Rick and Shannon are big assets as far as the capital side. So appreciate all of them being here. As we go through the presentation today, we do have time for questions at the end. But please feel free to interrupt should you have questions as we're working our way through. So as we look at our system today, we will discuss why we exist, who we are, where we are, and what we do. We will also explore how we fund our projects and maintenance activities along with the challenges and opportunities we face moving forward. There is no denying outdoor recreation is big business. Six percent or one in seventeen of all jobs in Washington State are tied to spending on outdoor recreation. It is estimated that for every dollar spent, one dollar and fifty-two cents in economic activity is supported. Conservative estimates indicate Thurston County Parks and Trails see over one million visitors annually. That correlates to roughly twenty million dollars of economic activity supported. This activity comes in the way of hotel rooms, restaurants, snacks, gas, things like that. It's important to note Thurston County Parklands contribute to aspects of well-being that go far beyond economic factors. Our properties protect sensitive ecosystems, promote self-care by keeping us happy and healthy, and encourage a strong sense of community. All of this to emphasize how vital Thurston County's parklands are to the community. As we begin exploring our system, I'd like to start with why we exist and how we see our desired future. As we strive to meet our mission, we make every effort to provide a diverse range of recreation resources, programs, and activities throughout the county, and promote the preservation and interpretation of Thurston County's historical and cultural resources, natural areas, and wildlife. As we work to make our vision a reality, we partner with our residents and visitors to ensure that our parks, trails, preserves, and programs are accessible and responsive to changing needs within our communities. We seek to provide respite from urbanization, preserve the environment, foster understanding of our natural, cultural, and historic assets, and provide opportunities for recreation that meet the needs of the community. The focus on preserving open space region-wide continues with a strong emphasis on connecting people to the land, water, and each other. Simply stated, our desire is to meet the recreation needs of our residents and tourists alike. Whether meeting with friends and family or exploring and appreciating the outdoors, we ensure adequate facilities exist to conduct these activities safely. So let's take a look at who makes this happen. Our staff is currently comprised of five field staff and a manager. This includes an additional FTE that was allocated to Parks by the Board in 2021. We also utilize seasonal employees, caretakers, and gatekeepers to assist in maintaining our properties and providing services to the public. As you can imagine, the services our employees provide are in high demand. One of our biggest challenges is managing our properties and meeting our residents' expectations with such a small staff. For context, three cities within the county average fifty-seven acres of parkland per employee. For Thurston County, that ratio is five hundred and fifteen acres per employee. So this is our inventory of parklands. This is where we are. In addition to the size of the Park and Trail system, we must also consider the location of the facilities served. As you can see by this map, our properties are spread throughout the county. We currently oversee two thousand five hundred and seventy-eight acres of parkland comprised of twenty-four properties. These include natural areas, parks, tidelands, beaches, historic buildings, special use areas, and undeveloped lands. Included in this inventory are fifty-six miles of trail, picnic areas, day lodges, shelters, playgrounds, and many other amenities. As we look at this range of properties, keep in mind just four maintenance specialists and one lead worker maintain this vast and varied inventory. These employees truly do a great job as they work to meet the recreation needs of our residents. I'll now hand it off to Ed, and he'll provide a synopsis of our properties and maintenance activities.
Thank you, Mike. Good morning Commissioners. The table you see here gives you an overview of our park properties, preserves, and historic sites. These property total one thousand seven hundred and fifty-four acres in total. The blue properties are developed parks where staff performs routine maintenance, janitorial services, and vegetation management on a daily or weekly basis. The orange properties are undeveloped parks and preserves that staff performs periodic check-ins for safety concerns, vandalism, or trash dumping. The yellow sites are historic sites that mark locations where cultural or social history have been preserved due to their cultural heritage value. Our parks are used by individuals and groups of all ages for recreational use, nature, nature-watching, event celebrations, and educational purposes. Quietly tucked away from the hustle and bustle of the city, Burford Park is home to some of the best views in Thurston County. Standing along any of the eleven hundred feet of saltwater beach frontage, you can take in beautiful views of the state capitol to the south and the Olympic Mountain Range to the northwest. Burford Park offers over three miles of walkable nature trails, three covered picnic shelters, a large playground, and hosted one hundred and sixty-seven events this year. Currently under construction and anticipated to be completed by the end of the year, the restroom replacement project will replace the existing restroom building and construct a new restroom near the playground. We're also in the pre-design phase of the Trail System Footbridge and Stairway Project. Additionally, we are still looking to level and grade the lawn area as resources allow. Fry Cove Park is an eighty-six acre park located in the in northwest Thurston County on Eld Inlet, about twenty miles from the cities. This secluded peaceful park offers beautiful views of Eld Inlet, fourteen hundred feet of saltwater beach, two miles of walkable nature trails, a playground, two covered picnic shelters, a restroom, and seasonal shellfish harvesting. The Fry Cove Lawn Renovation Project is scheduled for 2023 and is intended to improve the safety, aesthetics, and maintenance efficiency of the lawn area. Future improvement opportunities include renovation of the existing restroom and restoration of the current bulkhead. Located on Black Lake, forty-acre Kenny Dell Park boasts a thousand feet of freshwater beach, both paved and natural surface walking trails, two playgrounds, a rental lodge, and three covered picnic shelters. Kenny Dell Park is a popular swimming destination during the warm weather months and provides a grass lawn, delineated swimming area, and dock. Kenny Dell Park's Lodge and Picnic Shelters hosted eighty-two reserved events in 2021 and is consistently a popular destination for families and groups looking to celebrate or hold a meeting. The upcoming restroom replacement project is scheduled for construction in 2023 and will replace the current fifty-year-old building with a new, more efficient restroom that will be ADA compliant. Additional improvement opportunities include renovating the existing athletic fields and development of the Phase Three property. Phase Three is the third portion. It's another twenty acre parcel that is just to the south of the athletic ballfields.
Is there a plan for what that would be, or is it just a blank slate that we can? I mean, because the idea, oh, we're going to make soccer fields there in the future, or baseball diamond, or dog park, or what?
At this point, it's more of a blank slate. It's got limitless possibilities.
Only twenty acres.
Twenty acres, yes.
Undeveloped at the moment?
Correct.
The Parks and Trails plan for that property?
That's a good question.
Yeah, not as a specific.
No, not a specific, yeah. It's in our inventory of properties.
I jumped ahead. What was your question?
My question was the, well, actually, it was Ramiro's question of what Phase Three for Kenny Dell is. And then Ed said it was twenty acres like south of, connected to. And I was saying, do we have activities slated for that twenty acres? Or is it kind of whatever, you know, assuming we have money, is it whatever we want it to be? Or is there a vision already laid out for what that would add?
There's not. And actually, it's there. It exists, the twenty acres. But no plan to move forward with it as we're implementing current strategy, which is to expand, add capacity to existing facilities to help maintain, you know, minimal maintenance and operations costs. But it exists. Twenty acres is there.
But I would, I'm wondering, I frankly don't remember ever hearing about it. So maybe I've forgotten about it.
I wasn't even aware of that.
Yes, when Ramiro, I mean, I was writing questions down, but he asked it. So I'm, so, you know, when we, when we're struggling with park impact fees, you know, we have, it has to expand capacity, right? You can't just like replace the restroom at Fry Cove with park impact fee, right?
We can if we add capacity. That's what we're doing. We're actually using park impact fees for all of the capital projects that we're doing right now for Parks and Trails. We're including park impact fees. We are adding a capacity element. That is part of, one of our main strategies that we're using.
Okay, because I thought a few years ago we were having trouble finding the right projects for use of park impact fees. And if there's no shortage of those kind of projects to upgrade and expand existing facilities, so why were we struggling with that?
Well, before we implemented the strategy to add capacity to our existing facilities.
Well, this would be like sort of a connected step, I would think. I mean, obviously, more acreage is more work. But if it's in the same location, that's got to help staff versus starting a new property that then you have to travel to some other part of the county to maintain. Like, it seemed like there'd be an efficiency. If we were going to expand, you know, if we had the capacity to expand new park acres, that would make more efficiency sense than a totally new location. Am I on track to that?
Yes, yes. And you won't see us adding a completely new location. I think the forty-first is just to enhance what we already have.
Correct. No, I'm thinking of that because I didn't know about that. So it is the third phase. So they were done in phases. So there are three twenty-acre parcels. Phase one is the one with the connected to Black Lake with the swimming area and dock. That was phase one. And then after that was developed, I don't know the span between development of phases, but the phase two was the athletic field size with the large playground and walking track. So that was phase two. And then there's a phase three to be determined.
Is that a forested parcel?
Partially. It does have some more meadow-type areas in it that are overgrown now at this point. Next, we have the Chutes Falls Park. The Chutes Falls Park sits out in the southeast corner of Thurston County. Despite its remote location, many people visit this park for its natural beauty and breathtaking views of the falls. Our newly constructed elevated viewpoint and mulch walkway provide park users secure footing and an excellent view of the falls. As I mentioned, the recently completed Walkway and Viewpoint Improvement Project constructed a new mulch path with enhanced drainage and a one thousand square foot viewing deck. Improvement opportunities at the park include increasing the parking capacity and introducing historical and informational signage throughout the park. Next, we'll move to the summary of trails here. On this slide, we have the summary of trails where you will see the four trails that Parks and Trails the four trails that the Parks and Trails Division maintains and operates. The trails totally combined fifty-six miles and equal eight hundred and fifty-four acres. Our trail system is well-used by residents of Thurston County as well as visitors from all over the state. People use the trails for both recreation and transportation, and we see people of all ages enjoying the trail. Many children will grow up having fond memories of learning to ride the bike on their trails.
The, just a matter of clarification, I think I understand the eight hundred and fifty-four acres. And that is the right of way that we need.
Correct.
So it's not like any associated acres with the trail, aside from the trailheads, right? It's mainly what you're talking about is the, is the right of way that we are obligated to maintain.
Correct. Yep. In some places, it's sixty foot wide, right of way. And in some places, it goes up to two hundred foot wide for a short section.
But in reality, what we maintain is the prism of the trail to a great extent.
Correct.
We presented it in acres for comparisons sake.
Well, I think we maintain the prism of the trail, but also the vegetation that extends out beyond if you're talking about just the section.
But you don't maintain the hundred-foot right of way.
Just to your point, yes, the portion that would come into the trail corridor.
At the end, I have a question. When, when, overall, acreage per staff?
The Chehalis Western Trail is twenty-six miles in length, twenty-one and a half of which is multi-use paved surface. The trail passes through both urban and rural scenery as it stretches from the Water Bay Conservation Area near Boston Harbor to the Yelm Rainier to Nino Trail. Over half a million people walk, bike, run, and nature-watch on the Chehalis Western each year. In addition to the traditional trail use, many people use the Chehalis Western to commute to work or run errands, helping to reduce the carbon footprint in Thurston County. Partnering with the cities of Olympia and Lacey, we have an interlocal agreement for maintenance at the hub junction of the Chehalis Western Trail and the Karen Fraser Woodland Trail. We currently have the Forty-First Avenue Northeast Trailhead Project underway in the South Bay area, which will provide a new gated nineteen-stall paved parking lot adjacent to the Chehalis Western Trail. Just recently completed, the Latigo Fish Passage Project replaced two large failing culverts with a new bridge spanning Spurgeon Creek. The new bridge has a scenic overlook where trail users can view the return of spawning fish to the creek below. I look forward to seeing all who can make it to the ribbon-cutting ceremony coming up on November second. Future improvement opportunities for the Chehalis Western are adding a restroom at the Seventy-Sixty-seventh Avenue Trailhead and increasing the parking capacity at Fir Tree Trailhead. Next, we have the fourteen-and-a-half-mile Yelm Rainier to Nino Trail, which travels through forest, agricultural areas, and wetlands in rural south Thurston County, connecting the cities of Yelm, Rainier, and Taino. The trail corridor travels through many types of ecosystems and provides excellent opportunities to observe nature and wildlife. The Yelm Rainier to Nino Trail is also used for both recreation and transportation as well as equestrian use. Not only does the Yelm Rainier to Nino Trail provide opportunity for recreation and transportation to residents of Thurston County, but it also presents the opportunity for cooperative work between Thurston County and the local jurisdictions that the trail passes through. We currently have interlocal agreements for trail maintenance with the cities of Yelm, Rainier, and Taino. And in relation to those agreements, each jurisdiction does a wonderful job maintaining the portion of trail within their city limits. Earlier in the year, through our Trail Surface Preservation Program, we excavated and repaved a heavily root-damaged section of trail between Manki Road and Tip Sue Lane, resulting in a beautiful stretch of new paved surface. We were able to complete this work prior to the Seattle to Portland Bike Ride, which is typically held every July. This large event on the Yelm Rainier to Nino Trail sees approximately eight thousand bicyclists as they make their way through Thurston County. Improvement opportunities for the Yelm Rainier to Nino Trail include renovation of the existing deteriorating restroom at Wilkowski Park and constructing additional sports court amenities in Rainier.
Ramiro, did you have?
Yeah, I'm just curious if you want to share what is the proposal for the new acronym on this section of the trail?
For the Yelm to Nino, it's the Try Trail is what was proposed by the South by study. I think all three Commissioners were there when we.
Did Yelm approve that?
Well, no, this is, we have now gone through the whole process.
Yeah, so I don't know if Yelm has approved this, but.
The Try Trail.
That's right.
They reversed the name. The order of the name of the trail was.
They want to market it as then like Try Rainier, Try Yelm, Try whatever. It's tied in with the NetPits and Experience Olympia and all the marketing. But I'm reserving any position until I hear from Yelm.
Right, because Yelm.
Because they're. They got top billing right now, and they weren't at the meeting where.
The order of the cities is important.
Well, we will wait directionally.
So no, no, just, just to bring you up to speed.
But that's good, that's good initiative thinking. It's better than what we've been doing in-house, which is yurt. There you go, Ed. Now get back on track after that.
Right? Well, I thought I saw Ramiro kind of having a moment over there once I said it first time.
Got in a moment. I got many of those.
The unimproved Gate Belmore Trail is fourteen miles long, stretching from Sixty-S sixth Avenue southwest in Tumwater down to Gate in rural southwest Thurston County. This trail corridor is the most rural in the county, passing through several publicly-owned natural preserves and open spaces. The trail corridor traverses mixed coniferous and deciduous forestlands, riparian habitats, mounted prairies, and farmland fields and pastures. Improvement of this unused rail line into a multi-use shared pathway connecting the Tumwater area with underserved South Thurston County would be well-received by many people, groups, and communities across Thurston County and could provide the potential for connections to future trails connecting South Thurston County to Lewis County and beyond. The fourteen-mile corridor is owned by Thurston County and is currently considered shovel-ready as the most recently acquired section had the tracks removed in 2017. The Ralph Monroe Trail is a one-and-a-half-mile paved multi-use surface in northwest Thurston County. Although this trail is shorter in length than the other three, it sees high use from the local residents who walk, run, bike, or head out with their pets for a walk. The Ralph Monroe Trail is a component of the proposed Capital-to-Capital Trail that would link the state capitol with Capitol State Forest. Improvement opportunities include maintaining the current trail surface and identifying options to develop additional opportunities for parking.
And if you see daffodils right now, Commissioner Munster was out there helping them.
It's good to see him in the spring, but we plan on now.
We'll see the dirt work.
See the dirt work, yeah.
So on this slide, you'll see our preserves and natural areas. The areas are comprised of properties with rare or sensitive ecosystems that are primarily used for educational or environmental activities. The properties include Glacial Heritage Preserve, Woodling Creek Wetlands, Johnson Point Wetlands, and Black River Natural Area. Glacial Heritage Preserve is just over one thousand acres of rare Puget Sound prairie ecosystem, of which only two-point-six percent still exists. The prairie restoration is managed in partnership with the Center for Lands Management and a strong group of volunteers. Glacial Heritage plays host to many field studies from universities across the United States as well as Prairie Appreciation Day in May, which offers free guided tours by Friends of Puget Prairie Volunteers. Future improvement opportunities include the continuation of restorative efforts on the prairie and introducing historical or informational signage.
Can you repeat what you said about two-point-six percent of what is Thurston County's prairie?
Of, yeah, the rare Puget Sound prairie ecosystem, which there's only two-point-six of the original prairie system that still survives.
In our county or across Puget Sound?
Across the Puget Sound area.
And how much of that's in our county versus other places, do you know?
Did get that information. It's like one of the largest of its size. And universities come from all over to view that ecosystem, the campus. Heard regularly the three percent. Which is why it's like closed off or downwitted to, or to invasive species and things like that.
So species that exist primarily in that habitat, not a shocker that they would be endangered or threatened or.
not a shocker that they would be endangered or threatened or listed. Nobody's conspiracy, nobody's just kind of a simple fact of dwindling habitat.
Yeah.
Ninety-seven percent.
Yeah, there's like efforts with like, say, grub or those, you know, for like indigenous groups to come and collect the camas and do different types of restoration for that prairie. So it's very well protected and maintained.
It sounded like you were about to go to the next piece, and before you do that, you had this slide about preserves, natural areas, and then the only one you highlighted was glacial heritage. Is that because the other three don't have public access? Or why did you focus on that one and not Woodland Creek Wetland, Black River Natural Area?
It's our largest property and it has the most efforts going on there. We do have minor efforts going on with volunteer groups such as Trails Unlimited. They will go out and clean up the Johnson Point Wetlands and just kind of maintain the foot trail in there. We don't have any official use or availability of use at these areas. They're just natural areas.
But there's foot trails that public can access or?
They can. It's more of, they have blazed their own trails in.
It's not improved.
It's not improved, correct, yes.
But it's not restricted, I guess.
No, it's not restricted. We have, like I said, we do have groups that go in there and pick up litter, try to maintain the site in general to keep its natural state. On this slide, we have a list of open space and undeveloped park sites. The undeveloped park properties are dispersed throughout the county and ensure that the county has an adequate land base to meet the needs of the community into the future. Our historic sites consist of Myima Prairie Pioneer Cemetery near Glacial Heritage Preserve, where many of the early settlers of Thurston County were laid to rest. Fort Eaton Monument on Yelm Highway near Meridian Road, which marks the location where the fort was built in eighteen fifty-six, and the George Washington Bush Monument just off of Old Highway Ninety-Nine, south of Tumwater, which commemorates one of the very first African-American landowners in Washington State and one of four families who established the Bush Prairies area. Next, we'll talk about level of service. Level of service as related to capacity is the standard that the county set in relation to how many acres of parklands provided for one thousand residents of Thurston County. That standard was set at three acres per one thousand residents per capita. While we currently meet the standard, our increasing population will require the development of an additional two-hundred-and-ten acres of parkland by 2040.
Two-hundred-and-ten, you said?
Two-hundred-and-ten, additional. When we talk about levels of service regarding mates, we are talking about the frequency that we provide our janitorial services, vegetation management, and trash or litter removal. Currently, at four-and-a-half full-time employees and two seasonals during peak season, our maintenance schedule calls for staff to mow our parks twice a month, clean restrooms and remove trash or litter five days a week, and allows for a delayed response to vandalism. Additionally, staff is able to mow or trim our paved trails and perform right-of-way landscape maintenance every other month. The additional FTE that was added in 2022 has allowed us to enhance our service by increasing the frequency that we perform janitorial services, remove trash and litter from our parks and trails, and perform more detailed park landscape maintenance. As you are aware, we recently requested two additional FTE positions to help us provide a more consistent and enhanced level of service across all of our properties.
Maybe this will be an opportunity to ask a question. Early in the presentation, you made a reference of comparing the county with other jurisdictions. And I think it's very intuitive. Obviously, the county does not have enough resources to maintain that. But I'm just curious in terms of the comparison between the acres per staffing levels. I think you used a five-hundred-and-fifteen acres per employee Thurston County versus fifteen acres per employee. Oh, fifty-seven. Correct, per employee. I'm just wondering if we're comparing apples with apples. And the reason that I'm asking this is, I believe that probably intuitively, the park lines and the cities will be developed to a great extent. And the acres of the county is undeveloped, which you just went through the presentation, doesn't require an active maintenance, which results in staffing levels. I'm just wondering what will be the right comparison? Because, you know, the public is listening to this and the takeaway is five-hundred-and-fifteen acres per employee in Thurston County, fifty-seven acres per employee. So then, you know, is that tenfold the need in the county? Is that realistic? Because I think comparing the actual maintenance acres that we have versus the maintained, developed acres of the cities may be a good comparison.
It's a fair point. Yes, yes, very much. I think what I would add is that in addition to just the developed acres, we do spend effort in some areas that are undeveloped, the glacial heritages, the wetlands of our inventory. So there is a little bit more. We've defined the different tiers level of service. If you kind of remember back, I think that was in the, maybe in the post where we talked about tiers of level of service. And to get to the tier one, that would be with the addition of the two additional FTE that we've asked for. And that would put us at about rough numbers, three hundred acres per employee. Right now, that is the best we have, is what our desired future looks like. As we mature our asset management program, we hope to be better equipped to answer those specific questions. What is that sweet spot for us, if you will? What is that right mix of employees versus the type of facilities we have? So we're very much in tune with that, looking into that. And we're just, we just currently don't have that data to make the decision. We're in the process of acquiring it.
When you say on this slide, four-and-a-half FTEs, I thought that we had, when you say we added one last year, so we were at three-and-a-half?
Correct.
Correct. Because I remember back, you know, Commissioner Edgins used to say, Lacey's got thirty-seven and we've got five.
Including the supervisor, including the manager.
Correct, yes.
I thought we were at, I didn't remember us being all the way back to three and a half.
Yep. So the FTE that was just added this year was approved last year and we added this year, brought us up to four full-time maintenance special, maintenance, grounds and maintenance specialists. Then we have our lead position, which is allotted as half time in the field, half in the office. So that's how we get to the four-and-a-half number.
To do the field maintenance.
Correct.
The numbers that you're seeing are based on the 2021 because that's what we currently have data for. It's not including the new FTEs. So those numbers will change once we're done with this year.
Which number will change?
Well, the FTE.
Oh, I forgot that slide yet.
Yeah.
So let's go ahead and get through the presentation. I think we all have a lot of questions. And just looking at the time and making sure that we have.
Be happy to speed them.
Don't blame me, I mean.
So this illustration shows the parks and trails' peak season staff and their maintenance hours for 2021. Maintenance hours are defined as time spent performing janitorial services, vegetation management, building maintenance, and litter or trash removal. Fifty-two percent of maintenance hours are spent on trail-related work, while forty-four percent are spent maintaining our developed parks. The remaining four percent is spent at our undeveloped park properties and historic sites. The fact that fifty-two percent of staff hours are spent on trails can be a little misleading. With as popular as the trails are and with fifty-six miles of trail corridor to maintain, we are presented with a unique challenge due to the linear makeup of the trails. Maintaining trail vegetation is similar to maintaining our parks as we mow and trim vegetation to provide a safe and aesthetically pleasing site for recreational use. But that's where the similarities in maintenance end. For example, mowing Burfoot Park takes two staff members approximately four hours to complete, while the Chehalis Western Trail takes two staff members approximately twelve hours to complete. That's just mowing. That's just the mowing of the trail shoulders and does not include brushing back the approaching vegetation, limbing trees, or blowing or sweeping any of the trail surfaces throughout the seasons. Now factor in the remaining three trails and you may, and you may be able to see how much more time trail maintenance demands from our staff. During the peak growing season of March through September, once staff has completed trail vegetation management, it's time to start all over again. With our current staffing level, equipment downtime, and the needs of our parks, deferred maintenance on our trails rears its head. And as you will remember, we recently requested your consideration for two additional FTE positions to help us direct more of our focus towards trail maintenance. Parks and trails staff are dedicated to working efficiently and take great pride in our work. We don't see it as too much work for our staff to handle. We see it as, what's next? We understand that to maximize our budget, we must leverage opportunities for partnerships and seek alternative funding sources to help combat our limited MNO dollars. And with that, I will hand it back to Mike.
Thanks, Ed. With the interest of time and appreciating the questions, I am going to move pretty quickly through these next slides. I think the time is best spent answering those questions. If there's something specific, please do interrupt me. Our funding sources, Parks and Trails Program has two primary funding elements. The first is capital projects that are typically new construction, expansion, renovation, or replacement projects. Other component is maintenance and operations, which are the day-to-day activities required to keep our facilities in good working order. Generally, these funds have specific uses that they are tailored for and we try to navigate that to our prioritized projects matched to. Our expenditures for maintenance and operations, by far the largest expenditure is our people. The salaries and benefits encompass over half of our expenditures and includes our full-time maintenance staff, seasonal workers, and support staff such as accounting and admin. These are costs associated with the daily activities of taking care of our facilities. Professional services also encompasses some of our daily activities. It includes items such as trail security, caretaker services, and other maintenance activities that are beyond our staff's capacity. Generally, the largest one there would be tree removal. Our park impact fees that we spoke to, the County Adopted Growth Management Act, park impact fees in 2012 began collecting them in 2013. These are the funds collected as a component of growth where added capacity is needed because of additional users. These fees can provide a proportionate share of financing for system improvements to serve new development, provided there is a balance between impact fees and other sources of public funds. To date, the county has collected over four-point-seven million dollars in fees and over eight-hundred-and-twenty thousand were collected in 2021. Of these fees collected, two-point-million dollars remains available for funding projects. The funds spent in 2021, which is slightly over two-hundred-and-seventy-six thousand dollars, were allocated for the Deschutes Falls Park Viewpoint and Walkway and also provided funding for projects that are continuing into 2022. You can see by this graph that we're prioritizing our capital projects and working to maximize the funding we have available. While this is encouraging, we need to also recognize that this presents one of our largest challenges. That challenge is maintaining and operating all of our facilities, existing and new development included. Another element we must consider is deferred maintenance, those activities we choose to delay or postpone. Once we fall behind, additional resources are required to catch up. The mere location of our facilities throughout the county creates challenges. Travel from the Tilly Campus to a park or trail and travel between parks and trails can easily be in the forty-five-minute to an hour range, and that's typically a one-way trip. As we expand and enhance our inventory to meet the needs of a growing community, we are committed to maintaining our level of service standard. Having the ability to maintain what we have is a primary reason we requested the board consider adding the two FTE in the upcoming budget cycle. Even though we're faced with these significant challenges, I'm very encouraged by our possibilities. We seek to fund activities that give the absolute most of every dollar spent. An example of this would be within the Trail Connectivity Program. We've presented an option for a signature project that, once built, would make us more appealing for grant funding of future development. We actively partner with other agencies in ways that benefit all parties and residents alike. The Department of Fish and Wildlife and the City of Reineer come to mind. To be the most effective and efficient in the delivery of our services, we continue to develop our asset management program. This will allow us to make data-driven decisions, ensuring we conduct the right activity in the right place at the right time. We've established programs that take advantage of opportunities as we address various components of growing our system. You notice a few of those on this slide. We look forward to working with the Board of County Commissioners to ensure that the park and trail system keep pace with the ever-increasing demand for these services. We hope today's discussion has helped reinforce the goal of the Parks and Trails Program to successfully achieve Thurston County's mission, create a community that promotes health, commerce, and environmental protection with transparency and accountability. I thank you very much for your attention and we'd be happy to do our best to answer your questions.
Please stop sharing.
Thank you. Okay, Commissioner Edwards, questions? We'll start with you, sir.
Well, I guess the only question I would have because I think we all recognize the need is, you don't have a good funding source to cover that request in the future, do you?
The twenty-two FTEs, is that what you're asking, Commissioner?
Yeah, I mean, I don't think, I don't think there's any, no argument about the need. That's, I'm just curious. No, a good presentation. Thank you.
We always source at this point is general function.
Yeah, that's what I was afraid of.
But we haven't given up hope on any type of efforts that can be done legislatively. So I should think about what those priorities will be for the board.
Good point, Mary. Commissioner Wensor?
I think I covered my questions. You had your map of the different properties. The Cooper Point Park wasn't on here. Is there a reason for that? Or is that just in type of slide number six?
It is just an omission.
Okay.
Excellent catch.
That's a beautiful park.
Yeah, it is gorgeous, yeah.
Thank you. Okay.
I have some citizens that constantly remind me about that, existence of that property, so I would not forget it myself.
For me, it's Burfoot Park. So I was glad to see some of the improvements, especially the stairways and footbridges was one of the main things, especially as we hit rainy season that I heard a lot about, which was accumulation of puddles. And so I'm very happy to see that. But on Burfoot Park, I was wondering, one of the requests, and I know I talked to both of you about this, was the possibility of a porta potty kind of down near the landing. the possibility of a porta potty kind of down near the landing. I know several people mentioned the fact that the restroom, the main restroom was so far away from the main area that people were going in the bushes near, near the, right where the beach is. And so, you know, there was interest in maybe a porta potty being closer to that area. And I was wondering, you know, is that a possibility? And possibly a real restroom wouldn't be an option with environmental concerns, but maybe something like that.
I think that we can check in with, I don't know what the environmental concerns would be with a portable restroom and, you know, any chemicals that I'm not familiar with, the exact chemicals they use, but there may be some concerns there. We can absolutely look into that.
Okay. And then my other, I saw a lot of introducing historical and informational signage. And I'm wondering, like in a lot of different parks, and I'm wondering if that's something that we can partner with our historical commission as well as other jurisdictional historical commissions to be able to assist with that signage. That way it doesn't come directly from park impact fee fund or rate.
No, that's a great idea, and I know that it's been discussed in the past. Connecting with historical commissions and working out signage and
And we've even done some of that, even with like the City of Tonin, though.
Correct.
And I guess I'm going to ask, because there's been a lot of conversation, a lot of walkers and bikers use our trails. And as we go into this new world of technology, there's more electric bikes and electric scooters on the trails. And I guess kind of apart from this, you know, is there a conversation about those, or is that a conversation for another day?
In terms of access, access to the trails? Yeah, I think that that's an ongoing conversation in exploring the, the future uses, like as technology is changing, how are we adapting? What are those protocols that we have in place for our infrastructure?
So I can't imagine, though, with the, the new electric bikes telling people that they can't use them on the trails.
Well, people are using them, and there's been a lot of angry constituents.
That's a, that's a good point.
I can easily imagine it, because there's, e-bikes are bleeding into motor vehicles. There's class one, I don't know all the distinctions, but at a certain point, they're like motorcycles. So there is going to be a point at which, you know, you're going to have to find a balance.
I think that we need to grapple with that then, because, you know, part of the use of the trail is as a transportation system.
Well, yeah, and I don't think it's a matter of, my comment wasn't whether we're restricting or not restricting, it's adapting to what are those future, you know, uses.
Interesting. But I think that we do need to have a conversation.
Because the resolution the county has specifically is no motorized vehicles. And e-bikes are motorized, so that creates a conflict. And even my home motor association states the Polar Works has given the green light to use e-bikes on the trail. So I'm not going to get too, too down the road. But I think it is, it is a good opportunity to bring something, to have a conversation, because it's coming, and it's part of the whole process. I think be proactive on this will be, will be helpful.
Yeah.
Moving to the trails, I'd like to, you know, extend the kudos. The Judge Barclay stated here when Judge Barclay came for a briefing with the board. He's an avid bicyclist. He's an avid user of the trail. And he made a comment that the trail is pristine. And even in a couple of occasions, he has seen county staff working on the trail and cleaning up the stuff. To the point that he submitted a request for cleanup, and it was so responsive. So kudos to you. And he made the point, they make sure that we extend that credit to all of you on the trail system, so.
Commissioner Edwards, I see your hand up. I just want to kind of give a little bit of an overview. Me and Shannon met with the mayors this past Friday, and we talked about the possibility of the Gate Bellmore Trail and possibility of more extension. And so kudos to Shannon. I think she did a great job in advocating for the Gate Bellmore Trail. And explaining the differences between each of the trails as well as, as well as the cost and breaking it down. But, you know, one thing that came up is Yelm, the City of Yelm said that they had new opportunities to be able to partner and because they have new equipment, that they would like to maintain their side of the trail. And I think we wouldn't be, you know, we rely a lot on our partnerships that we have with other jurisdictions, and I think that's, that's been very important. Because we have four employees and four point five plus two seasonal ones. And just looking at the area of the county that you have to cover, it's all over the county. It's not just in one specific area. And the work that all of you are able to do with limited staff and the need is definitely there, and I think you can all, can all see that. So just thank you, and, you know, thank you for looking for ways. I mean, these partnerships with the jurisdictions, I think are, are efficient. It works for us and it works for them in terms of maintenance. And so just looking for ways that, you know, can definitely help us maintain trails all over the county. Commissioner Edwards, I saw your head was up.
Yes, ma'am. I just wanted to let you know that I'm going to have to step out to this EDC meeting. And then I'll be just a couple minutes late, probably getting back on for the next meeting at eleven.
Thank you, sir.
We're just.
So you, you garnered support amongst the mayors for the Gate Bellmore, or was there still discussion about?
I have this item on Tuesday morning to have a little more broad conversation. And I believe that Commissioner, here, Shannon is going to walk you through in detail as to what that recommendation will be, which includes the central Gate Bellmore, Bellmore section that you discussed, in addition to a potential other section that might be a good option. So we'll, we'll discuss that on Tuesday in more detail. And at that point, really, we would like the board to provide direction on the next step of that signature trail.
So I went to the NACO conference with Robin, and one of the, one of the meetings I attended was about parks and trails, because I wanted to see kind of what other counties around the area. It was not funny, but it was pretty standard about the issues that we are facing is pretty standard across all of the other counties. And you know, they talked about safety, they talked about, you know, the lack of funding. And one really cool thing that I saw that one of the counties did, where they were able to partner with, to kind of bring our park system, I guess, back into the twenty-first century and created this app. They partnered with a local college to create, it was Women in STEM, I think, and it was from one of their local colleges, to create this app for trailgoers. And they kind of showed a sample of it, and it was done for free because they were able to partner, they were able to get uses as credit for their, for their degrees and use it in their resume, and the county got this benefit, you know, just. And look, I think if we could look for those opportunities, I think it would be really cool if we could partner with one of our local colleges. Because I think our trail systems are pretty great here in Thurston County. And the fact of the possibility of expanding even more, and our different parks are pretty great. And I've discovered that a lot as I've walked with different constituents as I've been called for different matters. And just how beautiful they are and how diverse they are, I think it would be great to to promote it in a different way.
If I could speak to that.
Yeah, we have something that we're.
Yeah, we have been working on our education and outreach. Folks have been discussing the TRED app, which has been presented us through the Experience Olympia and beyond. And there seem to be some promising.
So there might be more to come on that, so we are excited. It's a good suggestion.
Absolutely.
Okay, it is eleven, well, county manager.
Just a logistical question. On the, on the opening ceremony of the Latigo Co-Work replacement, is the ceremony going to be held on the trail or on the road?
Both. I believe, I believe introductory remarks on the road and then the actual ribbon cutting on the trail itself.
So logistically, you know, I, I know very well that area. So there is a expectation for people to move between the two locations. It's going to be very challenging because there's no way to move.
They, they did construct a mulched trail leading from the road area up to the trail there.
Still going to be, it's
Yes.
Very steep, challenging. So
We'll look at that and make sure that one.
Just give you, give an indication, if it's on top, on the bottom, you know, there's a expectation to move people from one side to another, even if it's a mulched trail, they steep slopes, yes.
So what I'm hearing is, don't wear heels.
No, no, no. What people are, because there is a, there is a half a mile walk, most likely, to that location. So.
And if it's raining, we're.
Yeah, so, but looking forward, that's an absolutely jewel of a jaw.
Fantastic.
There you guys go. Absolutely gorgeous.
That was one word. You had to, that was what we had done with.
It's absolutely beautiful.
Okay, eleven oh one, we are adjourned.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good job.